Good evening. I'd like to call this Planning and Zoning Commission meeting to order on this May 16th at 6:00 PM 2022. If the clerk could call the roll, please?
Becker, O'Flaherty?
Here.
Pena Graham?
Here.
Stoker?
Here.
Wright?
Here.
Maxwell? Vice Chair McMahon?
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you. At this point in the meeting, I'm going to ask for the approval of the agenda for this meeting. Can I get a motion from a commission member to approve the agenda? And if there are any additions and deletions, please state so.
I move to approve as written.
We have a motion on the floor to approve the agenda as written by O'Flaherty?
Second.
Seconded by Stoker. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion passes. At this point in the meeting, I will ask for a motion to approve the minutes from the May 2nd, 2022 meeting.
I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 22nd meeting by Wright. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Pena Graham. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. The motion passes. The minutes are approved. Okay. This is the public participation portion of the meeting. Is there anybody in the audience that wishes to speak about something that's not on the agenda? If so, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, thank you. I just have one question.
Okay, can you state your name and address?
I've been reading about the Union Pacific is selling some of their properties, and the property I was concerned about is the DeKalb Depot, which has been vacant for over 50 years. Does the city have any thing to acquire it or nothing?
For the record, sir, can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry?
Can you give your name and address, please?
I didn't hear you.
Can you give your name?
My name is Schremer. First name is George.
Okay, and your address?
And I recently moved to Sycamore about two years ago.
Okay. And your question is about?
It's about the vacant train depot in DeKalb, if it's for sale.
I don't know anything about that. Mr. Nicholas?
Hi, I'm Bill Nicholas, City Manager.
Okay.
And in the past year, I've had several conversations following up on rumors about the possibility that UP might be selling. And so, the answer I get is no. And as a safeguard, just in case something happened by some other level of that large organization, I made it clear that the city would never, ever issue a demolition permit for it. So it needs to have a more useful purpose than it is. There's some cold storage in there now. There hasn't been much, as you say, there hasn't been much use for a long time. I think it's still got some good bones. It needs repair. It needs some tender loving care. But we consider it an historic part of DeKalb, and we want to keep it. So that's the official city position on it right now.
All right, thank you, Bill. We answered your questions, then?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Is there anybody else from the audience? Seeing none, I'm going to proceed to new business for today. On the agenda, we have the final development plan and the final plat. Approval of the final development plan and final plat for the Arista residences at 1383 Barbara Green Road. Is there someone here from Pappas Development that would like to approach the podium and give a report? For the record, please state your name and your address.
My name is Hannah Roche. I'm the Office Manager with Pappas Development located at 1408 Hume's Drive in DeKalb.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a couple changes that we've made since the original plans that were approved. We changed a little bit of the design element. We had to eliminate one of the three access points into the parking lot itself. It is off of the north side. That was eliminated due to nonapproval from the Northland Plaza owners. So that leaves us with two access points still into Arista residence. One is going to be a right-in, right-out off of Barbara Green Road, and then there is going to be a full access point, as indicated on the slide there, off of County Farm Road. So we think it's going to still create, you know, an easy flow of traffic in and out of the lot. It's not really a loss to us on that third side, but we did have to make some developmental plans there and changes to the parking lot access points. The other change we've made since then is the overall appearance. We had originally proposed kind of more of a solid brick coloring to the exterior. We have since added vertical pillars. Those have enhanced the exterior overall appearance of the building, and we also changed the color of the masonry at the bottom portion of the building. So it just creates a softer, more visual appearance to the exterior. Just minor changes, really just some color aspect that's been changed over there.
Thank you very much. Is there a staff report?
Yeah, just briefly, a report in your packet. Last January, the city approved ordinance rezoning the site, if you recall. Went through the commission a little before that. Annexing the site and approving a preliminary plan and zoning change for the property. It's a four-story executive suite, 61, one-bedroom units. And the plan development ordinance required that they come back with a final development plan, which include final engineering and lighting plan. They had elevations approved on a preliminary basis, initial map change, as Hannah described. And also, since then, the final plan shows that they tried to obtain access, the plan did show access to the north here, this east-west drive, which is a private drive owned by the Northland Plaza Shopping Center owners. And they were not able to get to agreement to get access on that. So the plan still, as Hannah mentioned, shows the two access points on Barbara Green and the County Farm, which the city has a right-of-way up to a certain point here. We do control that. So they do have adequate access still into the property, two ways in to the property. And she noted the elevations. This was the approved preliminary plan and the changes, again, adding the vertical elements to the building, which would kind of break up the expanse of it. And also, the different color of the stonework, the masonry at the bottom of the building. So I think it looks better. A little broken up more. So those are part of the approval. Staffs reviewed the preliminary plan. We also have a final plat that's part of the approval. This is a one-lot subdivision. That's a landscape plan that was previously approved. They just removed the access to the north. In the plats, it's a one-lot subdivision. So they'll be recorded to officially record the lot. So staffs reviewed it, along with the Kishawaki Water Relicimation District, and the all comments have been satisfied to the level needed. So the sample motion is prepared to approve it per Exhibit A, list the various plans that are part of Exhibit A and per the approval, so.
Okay. Thank you. Is there anybody from the public that wishes to address this issue here? Okay. Seeing none from the public, I'm going to open it up to the commission for any questions or comments for the city or for Hannah.
What was the, now, you talk about the brick that you've changed. Was there somebody that said, nah, that's too much brick? What was it?
Not necessarily. We usually pride ourselves on our brick exterior, just because it's, you know, a more durable material to build with. It just kind of wanted to change the visual appearance, soften the look a little bit. You know, it did break it up, give it a little bit of different elements. It really just was a more design choice there.
Anyone else? Anybody else have any further discussion? Seeing no discussion, does anybody from the commission like to make a motion on this matter? We need a motion to, either we discuss it, or we need a motion to approve or accept the final plat here?
I will make the motion if I can get it on my screen quick enough.
Is that, I don't think the library's internets-
Yeah, the library's internets a little.
Dan, is there a screen with the sample motion up on that?
I usually don't prove it. The wording's usually hard to see, but it's-
It's up there, okay.
If you need it, I can-
I got it, I got it. I can make a motion.
We can do it, okay.
Okay. I move that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommend approval of the final development plan and final plat for Arista residences on the subject site per the plans noted in Exhibit A.
We have a motion on the floor from Stoker. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second from Wright. Clerk, can you call the roll?
Becker, O'Flaherty?
Yes.
Pena Graham?
Yes.
Stoker?
Yes.
Wright?
Yes.
Maxwell? Vice Chair McMahon?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right. Well, good luck to Pappas Development on that one there. The next thing we have on our agenda is considerations. Discussion of the 2022 comprehensive plan update. I suppose that's coming from you, Dan, or Bill?
Yeah. So we've discussed this a few meetings, and since our last meeting, we've gone through the urban design guidelines, got a few amendments which I handed out. Nothing of significance, just kind of adding a little bit to it, expanding some of the language a little bit. I'll just briefly go through that. And then Commissioner O'Flaherty did provide some images and email, which I'll have her go over after I finish, and kind of talking about some ideas on signage, wayfinding, other art design elements that she'd like to have part of the plan. So I'll just run through the urban design guidelines. So these are broken down into, you know, different types of the land uses and features, and there's a guideline statement and an action statement after that. So Page 3, the first one, talks about providing parks, open space, bike paths in neighborhoods. This is an action item, it's expanding, working with not only the Park District, but the County DSATs, which is the regional planning organization who has a bike path plan. Working with them to develop bike paths in public easements or right-of-way. Also expanding language in Item 2. A lot of these recommendations, the action kind of comes down to, a lot of these have, well, the staff will review it with the commission during the subdivision process, plan development process where you do have allow to review these. So also the annexation process. So you have different levels where you're going to be seeing these, like the item tonight, Arista Residence, you saw the preliminary level, and you saw it again back at the final development plan. So it's expanding the language to include annexation in that review. Moving on, Page 4, talks about designing subdivisions to include view sheds, visual corridors. Again, implementing them through the plan development process and that language. Making sure on roadways that we have some deeper setbacks. We take a look at those, provide wider parkways. Just expanding the language. Those could fall on county estate highways and certain type of roadways. So I just want to expand that language to make sure it's complete. Guideline number 6, this talks about landscape buffers between different land uses, which we do have screening requirements in the UDO between commercial and residential. It's pretty basic. We need to look, or the recommendation here is to look at also areas between commercial and industrial perhaps, or different types of industrial. So the language is pretty thorough here. I just changed substantial to proportional. So it kind of depends, a lot of these result in amendments to the UDO to implement them. And so with those, it kind of depends if it's commercial and between industrial residential, they're probably a bigger buffer for that than commercial to industrial. So just a little language modification there. And expanding the articles in the UDO that we need to look at. They're covered in plan developments. Article 7 has some screening requirements. And of course, Article 12 is the, actually, parking regulations, which has set of landscape standards in there. Moving to Page 5, single-family, two-family residential uses. First guideline just talks about looking at compatibility with the new single-family developments coming in. It's compatible, make sure it's compatible with the surrounding area in terms of lot size and compatibility between the two developments. This would require that, making sure each lot adjacent to it has a lot size on it, so we can see how it compares with the surrounding area. And I just added, which we do usually get summaries on developments to kind of explain how it fits into the area. And our rezoning criteria or special use has criteria indicating how does this fit in with the surrounding area. So this adding language to make sure the developer submits a statement indicating how the development's compatible with the surrounding area. Page 6, Guideline 3, we talked about this one last time, about architecture of homes in the subdivisions, getting a variety of architecture, not making sure that two homes have the same exact style or right next to each other. So I just added a sentence that homes next to each other with the same architectural style should be avoided. So just reflecting that comment. Let's see, moving to Page 7, Guideline 4, under multi-family. This talks about parking, minimize the visual impact of off-street parking areas, require parking to be in the rear yards. And I put in newer, high-density developments. And I add some language allowing flexibility, because we do have a lot of older multi-family that occasionally want to add some parking. So maybe short on it, add a couple spaces maybe. And UDO does require, if you had any spaces, have to meet the setback requirements and screening requirements. So with, if you're adding two or three, and the parking lot backs up to another multi-family development, then probably should be some flexibility in reducing that screening, or not eliminating, but maybe reducing the amount of screening between a multi-family and multi-family parking lots. Under commercial, first guideline is this states about the architectural design of large-scale buildings, about how those should be reviewed, breaking up the building, different architectural concepts to do that in terms of definition of the entry, you know, avoiding the long blank walls without any windows. And the action item was encourage voluntary compliance through site plan and building review process. Those will occur when there's no zoning issue. So if it's just a building that's, the zoning's right, they have no variance, they'll go to a building permit. They won't go in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. So we do have some of those, like Worley's building on Harvester did not go through the commission, but they still had to comply with, you know, site plan and landscaping standards. So I just add some language noting that, and then strengthening the language for plan development districts and special use permits, when we do get a new building involved, making sure they complete cement architectural renderings like Arista did and showing the colors and materials of the building. We do that pretty good in the plan development language, but in special use permits, it's not really clear in there. You have to submit elevations. We have required that in the past with new buildings. And special uses are usually not involving new buildings all the time. So just clearing that up to make sure you, the commission does see these new buildings, the elevations of them, and that's part of your approval. The Guideline 4 talks about the central business district and having perhaps, keeping the historic, the design of the downtown consistent between the different historic structures and open spaces, and recommending or action that perhaps looking at a short-term downtown design guidelines. We do have some downtown plans from the past, going back a few years, but we do have those, which are good and a lot of good concepts there. But over the long term, look at historic preservation ordinance and also mending some of the, we have some advisory review procedures of the Landmark Commission, which we need to probably look at, relook at for that body. Industrial uses, just some word modifications, adding more clearer language where we're looking for, again, trying to find buffers between different industrial areas if needed. Some design guidelines, and complying with the site plan review procedures and plan developments as special use. It's kind of the same language I added there. And let's see, under public institutional uses, I don't really have any more language of significance, just more clarification as we go through the other urban design guideline categories. So that's about it. So I think these are in pretty good shape. We've gone through those a few times. And Commissioner O'Flaherty, as I mentioned, I'll maybe have you go through the email you submitted today and the images that you provided, which I copied for the commission. So I'll just turn it over to you, Trixie.
Sure. So I got overwhelmed, so I didn't, there's not a ton of stuff here. I'm still collecting images, and I guess for me, the things that I had the most interest in and I thought would benefit DeKalb while we're doing this redo of the comprehensive plan would be paying attention to some of the design elements of, for our community. So the different kinds of signage, wayfinding, those elements that we have in the community, having them be unified in design. I know in the past, we had different style, welcome to DeKalb signs. It's nice that they match now. Having more of those unifying elements, I think, make it feel more of a place rather than just a collection of signs. Also coordinating some of those wayfinding signs with what NIU has, I think, at least on a design level, will help maybe bridge some of that gap that the city and the university kind of have between each other. Because if we can blur those lines even more, that would be good. They're part of us, we're part of them. And so subtle things like having the signs play together nicely and work off of each other are just small elements that we can do, that will bring that together. There's a lot of examples of wayfinding stuff. I sent a couple of images. One of the things I know, I think it was maybe Steve Becker had mentioned, how in downtown, there needed to be some kind of wayfinding for public parking, because we do have all these, we have plenty of downtown parking, but they're kind of disjointed lots. And having a good signage where there's a bit of a directory, so people who aren't familiar or newer to the area are going to be able to find those parking spaces. Sycamore has a nice kind of a sculptural kiosk that's across from Sean's Coffee House that is, by itself, is a very attractive element. I'd like to see something, not necessarily just like that, but in that vein, where it's a sculptural element that also is going to be a good, like downtown directory with maps showing like that way to the Egyptian, that way to, you know, Byers Brewing or whatever, that way to the different parking lots. So we have a kind of a decorative touchstone where it would have those maps, and maybe another board that would be some kind of community bulletin board, whether it was digital or paper, you know, something, probably digital would make more sense these days, because then somebody at City Hall could just type it in, and it would update, and technology can be wonderful for those things. But I did send an image of another one that I found that was interesting, where it would be eye-catching, so people would want to see what that thing did, whether it's telling you something. So having the signage match, and also integrate the, in that wayfinding, integrate the bike path marking, because that's also been a bit disjointed, where we've got more paved biking paths. And I know that that's been an important element to a lot of people, where they've, when it's been added, I think the Park District maybe has done some with that, and I don't know all the groups that have. But we've got these biking paths, and let's make that be part of the community and part of the community signage. And I guess the biggest part that I just don't, I'm going to have more examples for the next meeting for sure, is the public art element. I see, so we got some grant money recently, and I know that there's been some action with murals, but I really think that softening some of these lines between different parts of town, having public art, whether it's murals or sculptural or even plantings, like landscape, you know, garden design, stuff like that, could really soften some of those transitions and be kind of a unifying element and welcoming element to town. And the places that I thought really could use something like that would be, you know, near the lagoon on Lincoln Highway, kind of bridging that university-city thing, how it could, it's, the lagoons are already kind of lovely, but if we had something that was a little bit more, I don't know, something that might draw people in, just a little bit more showing that this is a transition. Joining Annie Glidden north to campus, kind of softening that transition. I believe that the DeKalb Community Garden Project, like that food hub and some of that redevelopment, would be an excellent place for some of that to be. The Union Pacific underpass on Annie Glidden, that just needs something so badly, and is screaming for a mural. That would be an excellent way to brighten up that area, which can look very tired. And it's also one of the first things people see when they come into DeKalb. How can that get, it's a blank canvas, and if we can work with Union Pacific, I'm assuming that's who owns the, that property and would dictate whether anything can happen there?
I'll wait until you're done.
Okay.
Hit you with good news.
Okay. So that would be awesome. I want something on the corner of 5th and Lincoln Highway, on my store, on the corner. That whole area has been, I've been wanting to put a mural there for years and have gotten to the point where we're ready to go, and I think that would be an excellent addition to that other part of downtown that I'm part of. And then one, I mean, there's more areas, but the other one is the North 7th Street area. And this is partially because I drive up and down that road many times every day, going to and from home. But we've got that lot where Union Pacific has that gravel lot right next to Dimco. And we're not going to be, you know, nothing's going to really probably happen there, but how can we, how can we dress that area up so our eye goes to something pretty or something attractive there that would soften that kind of line? Because it goes from a pretty industrial area right into my neighborhood. And it, you know, it would be nice to see, you know, a mural on, I mean, that building, just because it's there, I mean, we would have to talk to them, of course, but a mural on that building Imbonz owns, like when I'm going north, there's the small party store in the front, and then I believe Imbonz own the back and use that for cold storage and other stuff. That would be a wonderful palette or backdrop for something bright. I'd also like to see something on the abandoned tracks that are on Locust and 7th is kind of where they go together, and how that might be able to be a really small prairie planting or something that that could be kind of a, it could be beautified. It would soften that line from downtown onto 7th Street. I think there's things that we could do. And I think it would be a benefit to everybody in that community. I don't know, it's a bunch of stuff. I need to get more pictures. Mr. Nicholas?
I think I'll jump in at this point.
Okay.
Do you want to add?
No.
Okay, so let me, I'll try to start from where you- Okay, so let me, I'll try to start from where you began and then if I miss a beat, tell me.
I'm confused all the time.
I should have been making more notes, but, so first of all, your notes generally that went to the commission later today, which I've had a chance to look at, are very much in line with what I've already heard from the commission, but also solidly in line with my own personal thinking, professional thinking, and that of our staff who've been working on this plan. We could beef up some of the language in the plan. Of course, the devil's always in the details and a comp plan is not a specification document, you know, in this month, we're going to do this. It's general guidelines and goals. And it's a five-year plan, so it allows for some time for these things to be done. It's kind of expected, though, that if these are priorities now, but in this five years, they will be done, some things sooner than others. What you've described, the good news is, usually in a downtown area, if you're going to really up your game when it comes to wayfinding and putting permanent structures, although they're small and they're outside, like gazebos and, as you call them, the structural wayfinding, the larger thing like the very nice gazebo across from Sean's and Sycamore, they require a little planning and tearing up the sidewalk and da-da-da. Well, the streetscape downtown is all going to be torn up in some fashion or another. There's also, by the way, going to be a lot of wiring and conduit run, some of it with known immediate purposes to try to expand the lighting downtown softer, but a cheerier lighting. It's kind of dark in the wintertime, if you've all noticed. Even darker in that middle block between Second and Third after that car about a year ago took out three streetlights and a couple of trees. But it's definitely not soft and mellow. I think the downtown Sycamore has it just about right. It took some time to get that done, three or four years of downtown streetscape improvements and so forth. I know I was very much in the middle of that and I'm pleased with the result. I'm not just telling you that, I think it has application to what we're doing and I don't think there has to be pride of ownership there. That structural gazebo, very much involved in that, except for the fact that you wouldn't want to be known. I could tell you who the creator was. He's not in, that isn't what he did for a living. He was a welder, but he did an excellent job and welded every one of those little leaves on there. The purpose, though, is something we can achieve in other ways. The one that we have right now, next to Plaza DeKalb, is about the right size. The problem is, we don't have enough of those and it's not electronic. So if you want, if you're in a fairly large outdoor mall and you don't know, you forgot or, you know, they change every three or four months. This store goes from here to there, except for some of the key anchors. So you got to go to the what?
The directory, yeah.
Correct. We don't have one of those, nothing major. You could almost have two in a downtown area, one at first, between First and Second and Second and Third. We have one, but it's not used as a directory, it's more of an announcement, you know, Tom Crier type thing. And that's good. You can do that on two of the sides and you have two other sides where you can have the directory. And as long as you keep that up and somebody from the city, well, we're right downtown now and Scott Zach does a pretty good job of that, so we can do that. And that can be colorful and attractive. And then we could put some other smaller versions of that around town that are more like public, this church social, you know, as long as it's in good taste, it's not something crass or mean spirited, it will work. And most of the time, that doesn't happen. Okay, so wayfinding generally is much needed and it should be consistent, in our opinion as well. And it should have just a nice touch to it, not look like I dot script. And that's what we've been religiously tied to for generations, I can tell you, back to the eighties at least. It's one size, one sign, one top. We can do better than that. We know that downtowns have other varieties. This is a state marked route, Route 38, but we think we'll prevail on that as long as it's consistent. And the signage is loud enough or high enough and readable for everybody passing by, driving by or walking by. So wayfinding, we think is important, too. Bike paths, we're going to spend quarter million dollars creating a bike path from, along Grove from Fourth to First Street as a condition of getting our permit for the downtown streetscape. Now, we had another plan for that, we were going to do it on Locust and then it could keep going east and could go along Locust toward the campus. But what the state required for width would have driven Locust into a one-way street and that wasn't going to work. But curiously, a parallel standard allowed us to go overland, which we did for almost half of this route, between the parking lots and the railroad track between Second and First, if you can find that. And it's actually a little bit of terrain change there and some trees and so forth. So we're going to follow that, we're going to build a path. You're going to have to put it into low gear as you go, a bike path. And you can go up and you come down, you're on First Street. And then you connect to the path that's going down First Street. It's one of those mark designated bike ways on South First Street. And then you can get to the lagoon. So it's not perfect, but in urban environment, it's not bad either, so we're going to do that. There's more to come, but that will be done this year, just so you know. Art. So you're not alone in being very interested in this. I would say a reinvigorated citizens, Community Citizens Enhancement Committee, C C E C. And they, fifty thousand dollars fell from T-Mobile onto this committee and our city. So we have plenty of money for public art. We have standards for public art and so forth. Where could it go? I think you should start attending those meetings.
Okay.
I'm not going to say they're more important than this meeting, but if you can squeeze out, I'd at least look for the agendas which are published a week or so ahead of time. And if you see something that is important, it'd be worth fifteen minutes and I know you're trying to run a business, but, and true for anybody who has an interest in that. You cited certain spots, absolutely the underpass at Annie Glidden and Thirty-Eight. So we can't touch the center pier, literally can't touch.
Okay.
The center pier. Can't even clean it. Can't clean the trestle above, the steel. But if you look at that as a drafts person or an architect, whoever created the retaining wall on both sides, the east and west side, tried to strike a pretty level line at the top, even though it goes like this, right? So it's, it could be ten feet or more at the lowest point and it comes up to about four feet. There's plenty of room for art on both sides. Guess who owns that retaining wall? The city of DeKalb.
Nice.
Ta 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 ta. So we're going to work with anybody who's interested in creating some designs and, you know, vet them and make sure that they say something good about DeKalb. And I use very interested in that particular spot, has been for a long time, and so I think we'll get some support from them in some fashion.
Oh, yeah, I would love it if any or all of the art could be.
Right.
I'm sorry, I'm just getting a little confused here. So are we just having a general discussion or how does this involve this plan? Or is there going to be a section about artwork in there or?
No, no, I'm sorry, I was just adding some detail because there were some detailed questions, so.
Okay.
Yeah, that's all it is.
We do have, as Bill mentioned, some in the goals and objectives.
General goals.
We have some language regarding signage, wayfinding already in there, so we could beef in that up a little bit, but it's not going into, you know, a lot of detail in terms of particular, you know, details of specific art, but we can strengthen language. But we have some goals already in there.
I can stop if you, I had just a few more details to add to your questions, but that's all right.
Yeah.
We can talk after.
Okay.
All right, well, thank you, Bill.
Keep going.
Yeah, you can keep going. I just was getting confused if I was supposed to be following along with something in here because I couldn't find it on the computer.
No, no. Generally, we touch on wayfinding, we touch on signage and other things, but the document doesn't go much beyond general guidelines and goals. So a lot of the detail I'm giving you is further discussion and elaboration that whether there was a planned discussion now or not would be relevant to what's going to happen in the infrastructure this summer and into the fall. So two last things, maybe I'll just combine, two. One, the corner at First and Lincoln, excuse me, Fifth and Lincoln, closer. It needs something. Some things were done in that block between Fifth and Seventh and between Seventh and Tenth in the way of the identifying the kind of art nouveau nineteen thirty's style. I get it, at least it was consistent, what was done, but it doesn't match up with anything western there.
Doesn't work, yeah.
So I think something else is probably needed there. And some wayfinding would be terrific, so that people understand, as they're driving to that intersection and the first thing that grabs their eye if they're coming up to Lincoln Highway going north on Fifth, the first thing that grabs their eye is McDonald's, so that speaks for itself, right? It's got the arches, but they'll drive right past your store. So I think something there that at least makes people look would be useful and we'll work on that. We don't have that figured out yet, but we'll work on that for sure. And then North Seventh, from the intersection at Seventh and Lincoln North and then everywhere east, all the way to Peace Road, to me, is an overlooked redevelopment area. It was in nineteen eighty-six identified as, but get this, the prime TIF redevelopment area. And a lot happened, sixty-five million dollars was raised and spent since that time and almost nothing was spent in that area. And so now we're left without the financial wherewithal to incentivize redevelopment. And hence, you're looking at Dimco, used to be a family-owned proud place, not bad for salvage back in the eighties, nineties and two thousands. It's hard to dress that up, but they usually kept the piles low, talked and worked with neighbors and built some fences that they kept up for the most part. Not the case anymore. Just so you know, we're in court with current owners and we're, we've raised the ante considerably. We're looking at federal court now. So stay tuned. But that doesn't solve your problem, except that the city owns that large gravel lot.
Oh, they do?
Yeah, except it's for what's in the railroad right-of-way, which isn't that much, which they'll keep anyway. You can't do anything in the right-of-way. And that large area is open for redevelopment, frankly. You know, we cleaned that up, took the asbestos out of the buildings and did all that stuff. So everything you see from Seventh to the fence line with all the cars is the cities, except for that one corner building, as you said, the Imbonz family owns now and uses it for storage and likes being quiet there as a security matter. So I don't know, but at the very least, something could be done in the term of this plan to do a lot more than paint a mural in that area. And we're going to actively begin that.
Okay.
This year. Okay?
Yeah, well, and.
It's all good stuff.
Yeah, just creative thinking of how we can, how we can make some small, bring some changes in, bring some touches in that will soften some of those areas and.
There's another thing about public art and that is if it looks like it's officially condoned and if it looks like it's kind of growing, it's just kind of popping up here and there, then people, I think, will be more inclined to be more self-expressive, you know, school groups, church groups, family group, whatever. Those standards that we have are pretty slim, I think commonsensical. So there are a lot of neighborhoods in our town with buildings, not just commercial buildings, that invite, they're just older, blank, large span walls that would be kind of fun and it'd be a nice neighborhood project.
Yeah.
Beats doing other things, so.
Is there any plans to include that in here, though? I mean, I can see on page fifty, you have mentions of wayfinding and mentions of signing.
Yes, fifty, right.
Yeah, so I mean.
If we could expand that a little bit, like Dan said, what we need to do is, so we work that whole plan through the C C E C and we bring that back to them. Right now, they're only focused on commerce in the plan that they have.
I mean, I'm not, I'm not against including a mention of art because I do think that is important and that could be a goal, you know, a specific goal.
I say this because, so if you, it's been hit by vandals three times, very sadly, just recently, two weeks ago, but the underpass under Sycamore Road between the restaurant.
Bees?
Bees.
Yeah.
And Hopkins Park became a place for a mural starting last spring and it was hit literally within twenty-four hours with a lot of bad stuff. So we put some cameras up and nothing again happened till the fall. And it was done literally in the dark of night with snow, it wasn't a snowstorm, a rain, bad rainstorm, cameras weren't working anyway, or maybe they were just the eye camera on. And then just recently, the Wi-Fi was out for, so it was a lucky night, they decided to, or maybe they knew and it's all bad again. So, but kids did all this stuff. We just said, in this area, just try to use these five colors, kids, and then go another twenty feet and use those colors and just make it colorful and, you know, be kind. So that's a heartbreaker, but we, I think we don't, you don't give up that fight, you just keep going, you know?
Yeah.
Keep trying. That's all. Sorry, I got a little bit off the train.
That's very good. Thank you.
I get excited.
All right. Any other questions from the commission?
I have another question. I had heard that there was discussions about the signage around campus to include huskies on the signs, is that?
Husky what?
Include huskies on the street signs, is that a rumor?
Huskies on the, yeah, we didn't talk about that. I think the only, there were, I'll take that back. So the idea was that there could be, you see a lot of these more attractive wayfinding signs that you could say like Second Street, say, and there's a more of a ball on top so you don't get snow sitting there and all that. And then there's usually some kind of a stem and sometimes there's a little larger ball under that. It would be big enough to put a husky head like you see that hydrant right at First and Lincoln, the husky, right? So you could do that if that's on all of them. What it says, it brings NIU into the, everywhere, wherever that is. And there is, that's not been ruled out, but if it's going to be like a husky dog on, at the beginning and the end of like Second Street or something like that, that won't happen. That's one thing that Ida is not going to allow us to do. Like if you've been to ISU recently, you can down there, they allow them to have red street signs, but it just says Second Street in red and white. It doesn't say, you know, there's no, all the other stuff going on there, so. We're doing our best to work with the powers that be here.
Appreciate that.
Yeah.
All right. Anything else? Further discussion on this?
So I'd like to come back another commission meeting, discuss. So I'd like to come back another commission meeting, discuss items or get more information in.
Yeah.
I'd do that, okay. So we'll do that, next meeting is June sixth, and we'll bring back the comp plan again. We'd like to do a couple open houses, looking at probably end of June, end of July. Bill and I have been talking about that in terms of the where and the format of all that, but, and then eventually, there'll be a hearing, as I mentioned, back in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission official hearing, and then your recommendation under the city council.
So we talked about having one open house on the south side middle school, one in the north side middle school, but they're not broadcast centers, this is actually a broadcast center, you know, we broadcast live, and that might not be a bad time to have a live meeting, so people can see interaction, and maybe it'll motivate them to see that, yeah, I guess I am welcome to say what I want. And the commissioners are so inclined, you, just like the council would be live, and then people in the audience could be live, too, they can be seen. Or if they had something to say, they could at least go to the podium, and then they could definitely be seen with the best camera angles. Because I'm told, I never see our council meetings on TV, because I'm sitting there, but sometimes in these areas, it's hard to make hear and make out what people are...
So they got open houses here in...
Okay, it's another possibility.
Can I ask Bill why we got him here? The lot, there is a lot next to Pine Acres, you know, it used to be a salvage yard back in the days.
Yes, yes.
Is there any plan for that lot? Is there...
Love to have ambitious plans for that. My understanding, I wasn't here when that was cleaned up, at least from the standpoint of getting the cars out and the salvage, what was seen, but there was a lot of ground contamination, and I talked, I remember speaking to Dan Kenny about this when I first arrived in two thousand nineteen, and apparently, all we can do is plant wild grasses and do things like that. We can't put foundations in there, can't disturb the ground below fourteen inches, according to EPA, and until, unless we get a different ruling, and we have monitoring wells there, so I don't do the monitoring, but our Public Works does twice a year, I gather. So it's a good question, because it's been sitting there, but it's in an area where you could have affordable starter houses, you could have, I don't know, commercials had trouble, you know, settling in that area, maybe with what's happening south of eighty-eight now, we'll see something involving here. Just stay tuned, all I know is what I'm telling you, and that put a damper on our aggressiveness in trying to line anything up, but it's a good question, it deserves to be asked.
The plan, we do suggest or recommend that that South Fourth Street be looked at for like a overlay district or a corridor study, so include that property.
In that corner of Fourth Street, where the, there's a park there now on the corner, the north corner there, and the wall is there. Any plans for anything over there, right across from the tracks, Lincoln Highway?
Oh, on Lincoln Highway there. Yeah, that's a good question. We talked to somebody, first time in some years we had a serious inquiry about the purchase of McCaves. So the blank, the grassy parcel is owned by the city. When the bank was torn down, the city did that, got as partial compensation the ownership of the land. The other side of the street is owned by the Park District, which has the gazebo there and so forth. It would require, I think that is ripe for some kind of redevelopment. The owners of the McCaves property appear to be, I won't speak for them authoritative, but appear to be interested in divesting themselves of the property. So it would be up to others as to what they bring in for a plan. Somebody wanted to just dump some money in and use the old frame and have something else. That was what came our way in two thousand nineteen. That was going to be a Chicago-style, like a nightclub-type thing, and with an outside rooftop patio bar-type setup and so forth, with parking on the city lot. But that was at the time with the expectation that the old bank property behind there could somehow be acquired. Now, that's still not a certainty. There's an active drive-through area there right now, ATM area. There's a little bit, but there'd be a, you'd have, you'd have an ingress and egress problem there, but there's enough space on land for the parking and for what could be a pretty active commercial corner. But you'd have to gain access north and west of that intersection, you know what I mean? You couldn't make a left turn, if you're on that parcel, which is McCaves now, or even worse, the city parcel, and go eastbound, because IDOT would never allow that, too close to, you got two state highways and a railroad crossing there, they'll just never allow that. You could have somebody try to make a Herculean curve there, but it's not going to be tolerated. So it would have to be either access from Locust Street or Locust, or North Fourth Street somewhere close to that intersection.
Any other questions for Bill while we have them? No? All right. Okay, staff, do you have any reports for us?
I was just going to mention, next meeting, June sixth, so we did receive an application for approved a cannabis dispensary in the Junction Shopping Center a few years ago. They have had not been able to get a state license, not cause of their own, but from the lawsuits at the state level. So they got an extension to July first, two thousand twenty-two, and they're going to ask for another extension. So they're still interested in doing that, they still lease the space there in the Junction Shopping Center, so that hearing be June sixth or the twenty-first. The twenty-first is a Tuesday, we have a holiday on the twentieth, so that's, twenty-first is a Tuesday. So once that notice is posted, you'll get an email with a link to the hearing notice, so you know when that's coming up.
Thank you. Does anybody from the commission have anything they wish to report? No? Okay, seeing none, at this point, I'm going to ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved.
I have a motion on the floor from right to adjourn this meeting, is there a second?
I second.
Second by O'Flaherty. All in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. All right, meeting's adjourned, thank you, everybody.